Counsel, please rise for the pledge allegiance led by the Honorable Councilman Jim Jolly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. All right, so this meeting sets the agenda for our 2001 era regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, September 23rd, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. We have a full council, and I'm going to jump right into audience communication. The council set aside 30 minutes for items that are not on the agenda. If anybody who has comments or concerns, please come to the podium now. Seeing none, I'm going to jump right over to council announcements. Counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Toy.
You had a birthday a couple of weeks ago, just to recognize that again.
Let's just continue. I would like to do it every meeting.
Well, that's what I figured, so that's why I thought I'd better bring it up again.
Can we sing happy birthday to him?
Oh, yeah, let's do that.
It's fine, just save it, you know?
Certainly. Because of my colleague, reminded me earlier, the Honorable Martha Tashnick, we have a Bentley dedication over at Bentley, well, what was Bentley High School, at Hubbard and Five Mile, this Saturday, the 15th, at 2:00. Is it 2:00 or 1:00? I think it's 2:00. And we're going to dedicate a marker that the committee has worked very, very hard on. And I know that Commissioner Morecki, Terry that is, is a bulldog, and so am I, and we're going to be part of that festivity. Schoolcraft College is going to provide some more refreshments afterwards. All are invited, and thank you, Martha, for reminding me of this, and we're real happy about that. And also, DTE is going to host an informative kind of venue of things about DTE as far as tree trimming and power outages and things like that at Riley Upper Middle School, starting at 4:30 this Thursday. And those of you that would like to go, please go in attendance and voice, you know, your positives or your negatives or whatever you want to do, but that'll be an important meeting as well. So, just a couple of events. We were full of events last weekend, and I know many of you participated, and it's just a great community for events and craft shows. So, other than that, that's about all I have to say for right now. Thank you, and happy birthday again.
Thank you very much for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just a quick point of correction, and I would never take, assume to correct Ms. Toy, but the dedication is Sunday, not Saturday.
Oh, pardon me.
So, it is Sunday, September 15th, at 2:00. So, I just want, I don't want people to show up on Saturday.
No, I don't either.
If they want to celebrate earlier, they can go to Ms. Toy's house. She lives on Rayburn Street. We'll give you the details.
There'll be a bulldog out front.
Saturday is the soft open, isn't it?
It's a party. Yeah, it's a party, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much.
All right, where do we go from here? Counsel, anything else? All right, let's jump right into the study agenda, starting with new business. Item number one is a block party. This is going to come to us from Sam Plymail, but Mr. Vargo will be standing in for him to be held on Saturday, October 5th, 2024, from 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Sherwood Street between Woodside and Westbrook with a rain date of Sunday, October 6th. If you want to come up to the podium and, you know, name, tell us what this event's about.
Yes, my name is Jake Vargo. Live on the Woodside Street there in Fairway Farms neighborhood. In the last four years, our neighborhood has just gotten together to build some community, and we've had a block party every year. Call it the Fall Fest, and we're just looking to have that again this year.
That sounds great. Counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I want to, first off, an approving, but if I may, just indulge for one minute, and not as long as sometimes some of my other colleagues do down there.
Which ones?
But, that's okay. I want to, I want to recognize Jake Vargo, and this man is just super outstanding, and I got to tell you about him. One of the standouts was when I was in the legislature in Lansing, particularly the Senate, he came forward and helped us with human trafficking. I can't tell you how much he helped us. He is a military guy from the Navy Intelligence. He does international justice. He helped us with the 19 bill package, which is unheard of in the legislature, especially on the topic we had, which was a really rough and tough topic because people didn't want to believe that that was happening, especially in Michigan, or, God forbid, in Livonia, Michigan. But anyhow, Jake was just outstanding and did his own nonprofit, and now does global kinds of issues and things that you're involved with on poverty and other things. I can't tell you what a standout he is because it was hard to get men involved with, no offense to our male colleagues or anyone else, but he just, he just helped us so much. And I just want to recognize you from the bottom of my heart because you made the big difference in that bill package, and God bless you for that. We really appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Well, we do have a motion on the table, correct?
Yes, we do.
On consent, is that okay?
Yes, that's good.
Perfect. Your matter is all but approved, assured to be approved. Thanks for hanging out, and thanks for everything that Ms. Toy has kind of told us about you. Sounds incredible of what you did, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And have fun at Fall Fest.
Will do. Everyone's invited.
Oh.
All right.
Everyone.
Everyone, he said, for the record. Anything from the audience about Fall Fest on Sherwood? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item number two, which is another block party. This comes to us, Stephanie, I'm going to have you say your name because I am terrible with names and I don't want to get it wrong, which I probably would.
No problem. It's S. Striker.
S. Striker, to be, so she's looking for a block party to be held on Sunday, October 20th, 2024, from noon to 5:00 on Brenton Drive between Norwich and Pollyanna Streets. Tell us a little about what you've got going on.
So, we started this event about 12 years ago. It's in Windridge Village subdivision, and we have several hundred participants now, so it's safer for the children to barricade the roads. We have food trucks, games. I work at Homes Middle School. Our NJHS students come and supervise all the games for their volunteer hours, so it's just a nice community event.
Awesome. Counsel?
I will offer an approving for consent.
We got an approving on consent. Did you want to say anything, Mr. Jolly?
I was just going to say, I have one of those home students.
All right, tell her to sign up.
You can work her down.
Sounds great.
Well, again, you have an approval on consent. Have fun. Keep it going. We'll see you next year.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the audience for the block party to be held on Brenton Drive? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item number three, which is a request to approve and recognize the Clarenceville High School Homecoming Parade Parade Route, the closing of certain city streets, and the request to designate and authorize Senior Police Officer Mike Archalien to sign the Wayne County Road Commission permit on behalf of the city to close a portion of Middlebelt Road, with the city to assume liability for any damage claims that may arise from a result of a road closure. I think, oh, hello?
Hi.
Name and add, name for the record, and tell us a little bit about what you've got.
Yeah, I'm Megan Fitzgerald. This is my fourth year supervising homecoming festivities. I'm a teacher at Clarenceville High School. So, it's the same as you guys have seen in the past. We close down the same, same roads for our homecoming court. It already sounds like we have a ton of, even some of our littler ones participating this year, getting ready and excited to participate this year, so looking forward to another, another event.
That's awesome. If you need, I mean, honestly, City Council, we would come out and help. Just let us know. Honestly, I know you guys have been doing this for years and years and years, and with Clarenceville, it's always good to break those silos down and ensure that you're getting city representation, so let us know.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilwoman Donovanick?
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll offer an approving consent, to your point. You've done this for many years, but I just want to note, it's funny that Mr., the president just said that because he's always been a big supporter of Clarenceville. I know the council president's always talked about how important is that relationship with Clarenceville and making sure we kind of break up those silos and work better together. And I know there's been emphasis on that recently, and that's really been led by him over the last couple of years. So, happy to see you guys continue to do that and looking forward to a successful event.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Megan, do you know how, if I made a mistake?
Yes, absolutely.
Megan, do you know how many years it has been? Because ever since I've sat here.
Oh, gosh. It's been, it's been going for a long time. Like, and they, back in the day, it was like floats and all that, which we tamed that down just a bit because it's hard, it's hard on the adults and the kids to get that. But yeah, it's been going, I don't know the exact number, but it's been going on for, it's a tradition, for sure.
Because Brandon does make a mean float, you know?
Oh, for sure.
Okay, so if we bring it back, I'll be calling, I'll call you directly.
We're working, Dan MacGyver.
There we go.
But yeah, let us know. Honestly, we'd love to be a part of it.
Okay, thank you.
So, right now, you have an approval on consent. Anybody from the audience have an issue with our Clarenceville Parade? Better not, see you not. We'll see you then, but send us information, honestly.
Yes, will do. Thank you so much.
Good to see you. All right, moving on to item number four. It's a waiver petition comes to us from the Planning Commission, petition 2024-07-08-04, submitted by Wine Palace to construct in addition to the existing retail building at 13971 Middlebelt Road, located on the west side of Middlebelt Road between Schoolcraft and Linden. Mr. Termina?
Thank you. This is a request by the Wine Palace to expand their business. As everyone knows, this is located on the west side of Middlebelt Road, just north of Schoolcraft Road. This is a, about three quarters of an acre size property, has commercial to the north, the east, and to the south. There's residential to the west. The building today measures about 7,500 square feet. The addition would be on the south side of the building. That addition is about 2,456 square feet, bringing the total floor area to 9,992 square feet. The building meets all of the setback requirements for the C2 zoning, or C1 zoning district. The building itself will match the materials of the, or the addition will match the materials of the existing building. Parking, zoning ordinance standard requires 53 spaces. We can use the ITE or the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual. In that case, it recommends 27 spaces. So, with 37 parking spaces on site, it does meet that requirement. Planning Commission is recommending approval of this petition. It really allows for really a significant portion of the store's floor plan to be reconfigured, including new sales counters, coolers, and display area. Mr. Denha is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Termina. Counsel? Councilwoman Donovanick, and then I'll go to Councilwoman Toy.
Thanks, Mr. President. I think Mr. Denha is here, the better-looking, smarter brother.
Oh.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
My brother usually does this stuff, so I, I just want to, I get a little nervous. I'm not good at.
You're in good company. Thank you.
Much rather prefer your presence over his.
Thanks, Rob.
Question, sir. So, the exterior facade is going to match what's already out there?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
You'll be kind of moving some trees around, moving some grass around?
Right. Yes. We're going to be moving, my brother knows better than I do, but we're going to, it's going to all, it's going to look really good, Rob.
Very nice, yeah. It's nice to see enhancement on our buildings in our city.
Yes.
You've been here a very long time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and it's nice to see.
We love Livonia. This is like, this is, we've been here 40 years, so I just.
Been a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great to see that improvement, seeing our local small business owners investing back in their businesses here in Livonia, and we're here to help. So, Mr. President, unless there's any objection, I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
Awesome. We have an approving on consent. I'm going to go to Councilwoman Toy, then Vice President Tashnick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to say, you know, they've been here for forever, and it's nice to see you expand your business as well and hang in there and have a family-owned business, which is unheard of in these days with everything else going on to all of us retailers.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yep, I know the feeling. And so, I commend you for that. I was going to offer an approving, but my very esteemed colleague beat me to it, and that's fine. So, much success to you and your family.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the good business, and I know you donate to our community heavily too. Thank you for that.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I'll go to Vice President, and then I'll go to Councilman Jolly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Always good to see you guys here. Quick question. First of all, the snazzy digital sign that you guys just put up, is that going to be impacted at all by?
What do you mean, like?
Like, you're not going to be relocating that or anything?
No, it's going to stay there, yes.
Great, love that when we drive by. My, my big question, though, is there going to be a change to the driveway entrance? I did see the Planning Commission meeting, but I wasn't sure.
You mean changes in?
Coming in off Middlebelt.
Not, not to my knowledge, no. I mean, we want to do a new parking lot after we're done with the construction. We just don't want to do it right now, but no changes that I know of, no.
Okay. I'm just worried about the safety of that entrance there. But other than that, yeah. For those of you who don't know Cliff and Kelly, they do a lot of investment in our city, and we're always thrilled to see them here, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jolly?
Where did you go to high school, sir?
Brother Rice High School.
And that's exactly why I won't be snubbed.
I knew you were going to say that.
They're always talking about Bentley and all this other stuff. I got to take an opportunity when I can, but despite being a Brother Rice guy, you guys do a lot of great in the community, and we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
It's hard to overcome that barrier.
Anything else from counsel? Anything from the audience? I'll lay it on two. You guys are great. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And honestly, this will be a great addition to your business. You guys do such a good work. Let us know if we can be of any help.
Thank you so much.
And again, thank you for your contributions to the community. You're on consent, so if you want to come out and hang, just tell Kelly he's got to show up.
Exactly. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number five, is a waiver petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to 2024-07-08-05, submitted by Impact Ventures Corporation on behalf of Wendy's, requesting to reconfigure the parking lot and drive-through facilities and remodel the interior and exterior of the restaurant at 335, 34450 Plymouth Road. Mr. Termina?
Thank you. This is a site plan petition involving the Wendy's Restaurant at the corner of Plymouth and Stark Roads. In this case, the building, about 2,800 square feet, would remain roughly the same size. The interior would be completely remodeled, reducing the seating from 48 down to 29. In front of the restaurant, the solarium gets removed. New landscaping, as well as an outdoor patio, gets installed. The exterior facade of the building is completely remodeled. The existing mansard is removed and replaced with aluminum composite materials and Nietzscheha panels. The, there is a second drive-through being added at the rear of the, behind the restaurant. There'd be a new landscape island created, separating the two ordering stations. Parking spaces would be realigned. The 90-degree spaces get modified to 60-degree parking along the north side of the property. Access to the site does not change. New landscaping along the frontage, including PRDA-style piers and fencing, new dumpster enclosure in the back, all new signs, which will be subject to Zoning Board of Appeals approval, and then additional crosswalks provided between the front of the building and to Stark and to Stark and Plymouth Roads. Planning Commission is recommending approval as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Termina, counsel.
And I believe you have new data.
Yep.
Some of the modifications discussed at the Planning Commission incorporate those changes.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Termina. Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you. Glad to hear all this, Mark. You guys are doing a super job. There's so many businesses in Livonia that are, you know, putting a lot of dollars in, and it's nice to see. And this one really needs some help there, you know, just updating, if you will. And, you know, for those reasons, and from what planning said, I mean, there's no doubt that we should offer an approving on what they're doing. So, I'll offer that, Mr. Chair, on the regular at this point, unless somebody wants consent.
Okay. I'm going to go to Councilman Jolly.
Mark, can you show us the elevation of what the building will be looking like? Okay. And I just think it's important, I, so there's one particular, I think this looks great. I think it's a great improvement, a great investment. But, you know, I think it's important when we look at these particularly fast food enhancements in the city, that we take the time to look at what it's going to look like and kind of show everybody as well. A couple have, in my opinion, things that I voted for when I saw them ultimately being built in the area, were sometimes not up to what I expected them to be with the materials and things of that nature. So, I think this is good, and I think this kind of, what's interesting is, we just went through this, I think, in the last five years with another Wendy's in Livonia. I think the one on Eight Mile.
Yeah, so there's all of the Wendy's, Middlebelt Road, Eight Mile, and Grand River, and a second one on, I think, Middlebelt. But anyway, they've all been modified to this new prototype. This is, this is a unique proto, design, maybe the architect can speak to it, but this is the last Wendy's in Livonia to receive the enhancements.
Yeah. What I think is funny is, I think this is even an enhancement over those other previous incarnations of enhancements in the community at the Wendy's, so, thank you, sir. I think it's okay for consent.
Okay. Councilwoman Toy, Councilman Jolly asks if it's okay, if it's on consent?
Oh, sure.
If that's okay with colleagues. I'm going to go to Vice President, and then I'll go to Councilman Donovanick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm not sure if this question is for Mr. Chairman or if the petitioners here. During the Planning Commission meeting, there was a lot of talk about the tree out front. Did that ever get resolved? I went back and actually looked in the minutes, and I didn't see if there was any resolution to what we were going to do with that tree out front that was causing some issues.
I don't believe the tree is, they're showing an existing tree along the frontage that appears to remain, so maybe that's the tree that was referenced during the Planning Commission.
And just like this, yeah, the petitioners.
Just like that.
Name and address for the record?
Joe Kane, Fieldstone Architecture, 3,400 Auburn Road, Auburn Hills. Yes, the tree out front on Plymouth Road is, to remain. We are in conversation with MDOT to remove the, possibly remove that landscape island for more visibility of the site. We just have to petition MDOT with a application, and they also want consent from the city. They have your approval to remove that as well.
Okay. Because, yeah, that was not only the site to be able to see your place, but also from a safety standpoint as well, and that was one of my concerns. So, you will now be entering off Plymouth or off just Stark?
For pedestrian?
No, for drive. Drive will be both, right?
Yeah, those are the existing drives.
Existing, so that's going to stay.
Correct.
And then, the other question I had is a walkway out front, and I wasn't clear on whether there was going to be walkability out front on the Plymouth roadside.
Yes, so we were connecting the, the front of the building to Plymouth Road with the sidewalk.
Perfect, okay. Just kind of getting that walkability to the Wendy's.
Correct.
All right, I actually think this is, I hate to use the word swanky, but I think a swanky-looking Wendy's and a much-needed project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Donovanick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too had questions about, you know, I've driven down Plymouth Road a million times now, and it was always, I'd hate to see such a nice project be overshadowed by that vegetation, those trees out front. They're rather large, you know, they're kind of tired-looking trees. And I was hoping with the PRDA improvements that you guys would look at removing those trees, redoing that landscaping, just because it just doesn't match. You're investing so much money in such a beautiful building just to leave those trees there. They don't, they don't match the aesthetic, so I was hoping you guys would address that. Now, if there is no objection, my colleagues, I'm not going to, you know, go deep into the weeds, no pun intended, but I was hoping you guys would address that. With the PRDA improvements, there is sort of a landscaping bed right there. Does that landscaping bed stay there, or?
No, that's what I was mentioning, that we were in conversation with MDOT about removing that, and we have to file a petition with them. And again, they want approval from the city that you agreed to that as well.
Even on, even though it's north of the sidewalk on?
It's in the right of way, correct.
Interesting, okay, because I, the way the property line in our drawing was, is that was south of, north of the sidewalk, but what you're saying is you'd still need MDOT approval.
That's correct. Those trees and that landscape is in the right of way.
Do we need, Mr. Termina, do we need MDOT approval to do the PRDA enhancements then, if that's what the petition are saying? If they can't remove mulch and little trees, do we need approval to?
The fencing and piers are all located on the, on the property itself, so.
Correct.
That's not going to impact the, the public right of way. We'll take a look at the landscaping that's being referenced, and if the administration doesn't feel comfortable making a decision on the removal, we can always take that to the PRDA. I'm sure they understand, especially given the, the other improvements that are being made to the property.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about Bill Brown down the street, how they're adding.
Correct.
Enhancements to their PRDA. I think it's really important that this council is very strict on PRDA. DNB Landscaping just invested a ton of money at the corner of Middlebelt and Plymouth Road on the PRDA, so I think we should be very intentional on those enhancements. Other than that, I think this is great, and thanks for investing money into your building. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for the comments. We'll also, the applicant would also like to remove those trees, so that's something we will talk to MDOT as well.
Awesome. Councilwoman Buzimski?
Will there be bike wrecks?
Bike wrecks, yes, yes.
I just, you know, again, I think it's a, it's a great improvement on the space, and to make it walkable or accessible to people in various modes of transportation is important.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else from counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could we gently tell our engineering department to assist them with MDOT? I'm assuming you know some people there.
Here, I'll just say, Mr. Lear, can we gently tell you to work with MDOT?
Yeah, it shouldn't be a problem. MDOT really won't have much of a thing as long as PRDA is good with it, so.
I think he was just texting the MDOT guy, actually, so.
Very gently. All right, so seeing nothing else from, now, is the colleagues, is everybody okay with it staying on consent? All right. Anything from the audience? Seeing none, you have an approval on consent. I just want to say that, you know, nothing against the current condition of that building, but it's the most bland Wendy's I've ever seen in my life, and in half the time and everything, it's open. So, thank you for enhancing it and bringing it up to 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number six, is the appointment of David Veselinck to the Plymouth Road Development Authority. This comes to us from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term that will expire on May 16th, 2027. Good evening. Is there anyone from the administration, Mr. Termina?
I am happy to introduce Mr. Veselinck. Most of you know him from the many years he served as a reporter for the Observer Eccentric Newspapers. Dave is now part of the marketing team at Schoolcraft College. He is the mayor's appointment to the Plymouth Road Development Authority. He is not only a resident of the city of Livonia, but he also satisfies a statutory requirement that we have, at least one member serve as part of a taxing jurisdiction within the district. So, for that reason, Dave is a logical choice to serve on the PRDA.
Awesome. I'm going to hand it, Dave, if you want, I mean, you pretty much know everybody here, but do you want to just say, you know, at least a two hours, you know, version of what, who you are and what you like to do?
No, this is, it's a little weird, I'm not going to lie. I'm so used to being in the back.
We got you in the hot seat.
It's been a few years, but, yeah, no, I'm honored and happy to do this. Plymouth Road is an important corridor, as we just literally talked about, and I too am happy about that Wendy's because I always felt sad eating in there. If I was on reporting jobs, I'd stop in there for lunch and go, oh, this is a sad-looking building. So, I'm really happy to see it, see it get some improvements. You know, Plymouth Road is an incredibly important development, you know, roadway, and I'm really happy to serve the city in a new, different kind of way than I have in, in previous years. So, I'm thankful to Mayor Braz and the administration, and hopefully to the council for your approval.
Absolutely. I'm going to go to Councilman Jolly.
If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
We're going, Councilman Jolly wanted it right off the bat, so.
Well, no, I think this is, no. There's a lot of things we could say about David, but, you know, he has not held a formal title within our community or our government structure anyways, but he has added substantial, very substantial service to the community by way of his journalistic talents. David has been, up until relatively recently, in the last year, year and a half, maybe two years or so, has really been the voice that provided the news of all the developments and all the happenings in the city of Livonia and a lot of the surrounding communities. And he is somebody who has put his, you know, just from a professional perspective and appreciation, really put his journalistic responsibilities first, and I'm glad to see that he has moved on to something else, but stayed in our community, being at Schoolcraft College, and I think this is an absolutely perfect fit. There are probably very few other private citizens in the city who know as much about developments that have happened in the last 10 years as David does, and he has a vested interest as well. He's a father to young children and has put roots down here in the community as well, so.
Who now go to St. Michael's on Plymouth, off Plymouth Road.
I know, and they will expect their father to get them Frosties at the new Wendy's as they're driving home.
We go the other way to go home.
Well, my, any approval will be subject to you driving the other direction. Anyways, Dave, anyways, I think this is.
Look at our city attorneys kind of puzzled right now.
I think this is an absolutely great choice, and I mean, like, this is, this seems very collegial, but it's, it's actually the first opportunity we've had to thank David for his, the efforts that he's put forth to furthering our community, and I just think this is a great choice, so, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Very, very kind words. Appreciate it.
Vice President?
Mr. Jolly, do you want to offer an approving or?
I would offer an improvement for consent, so long as there is no objection.
I just wanted to make sure you wanted that somewhere. But I actually wanted to ask the question, you know, if you're going to be joining the PRDA, what are your opinion on the trees in front of the Wendy's? I'm just kidding.
I want to look at it, I want to look at them again, because once again, I don't, I don't drive that way as often, so I'm picturing it in my head, I'm looking, I'm going, but yeah, that, I'm really happy to see that that Wendy's is going to get a big facelift because it is looking rough. It, you know, looked like the one on Five Mile and Merriman, which, you know, I always said the Wendy's side at the Five and Merriman looked like she had a beard on. It was so rusty, this one just, yeah, so I'm really happy to see that one.
Ditto. Councilman Toy.
You know, if I may, David, David, we're real happy for you, obviously. I would hope as a business owner on Plymouth Road that perhaps, you know, we see some of the people from the PRDA come down and talk to us a little bit about things we see because we are there sometimes a lot longer than we want to be, if you know what I mean in retail. But in all seriousness, you know, with Penske and others putting a lot of dollars in, at least right by where I'm at, it's, it's helpful to have somebody here in the city so that we don't get blight happening a lot and things like that. Because as you go down Merriman Road to the north side of the street, it's starting to look a little shabby down there. And I, I'm thankful that we have a PRDA that can keep an eye on things more as well as our staff here in the city that do a great job. It's just, it's an aged road, we're built right up to the, you know, sidewalks and things like that and the right of way is, you know, so all those kinds of things have to be considered. And some of the people that stray down there and I back up to Rosedale Gardens, which is a great sub. But I'm just saying, it, it's helpful to always hear it, you know, kind of like the Walmart venue of things and appreciate your input. And I know you're good at that after being a reporter all these years, et cetera.
I appreciate that and most people do have ways of contacting me whether I want them to or not.
Yes, right.
So I've had the same phone numbers since high school, so.
Perfect.
It doesn't change, so if you have it, it hasn't changed. I'm happy to talk to anybody, I'm happy to do, be a lot of learning, but it's something I'm excited to do and kind of excited to be on this side of the coin as opposed to the other one.
Absolutely, well, thank you, sir, again.
Oh, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else from council? Seeing none, hey, thanks, we like to have you on Team Livonia on this. Good luck, let us know if you need anything and welcome aboard.
Appreciate it, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Does anybody from the audience have an issue with David? Look how I phrase that. On the agenda item, nothing more. We'll see.
I'm sure there's plenty of people have issues with me and I've dealt with them, I've talked with them offline.
Anytime we can get you at the podium rather than hide it in the background.
I forgot how bright these lights are, that's why I never liked being up in front, I don't know how you guys do it.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you, Council, really appreciate it.
All right, moving on to item number seven is a request to approve the revised fee waiver policy grid. This comes to us from the office of the mayor in order to make it more user friendly and less accessible to constitutional challenges. Is this, Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah, the grid has been in effect since I believe 1995. Got the details in the actual document that's in front of you. It's been revised a number of times. The, the core purpose for it, as best as we can tell by reading the legislative history, is to streamline and simplify the process for the citizens who would be using it, for city council and all, all of the agenda. And all of the, all of the people involved in doing this. The grid sets up categories of users that you would, had they petitioned for a waiver of a fee in whole or in part for having their event, you would grant it in whole or in part. And, and, and the grid was created to make it easier for people to just to get the fee waiver without having, you know, 40 people bringing their events to you every month. I might be overstating it, but that was the message. Quite frankly, not being around back when the grid first started, I have no idea how many people were coming to council to petition. We have seen it change over the years for various reasons. This current change was prompted by the observation that it's more complicated now than it needs to be. Perhaps it needed to be so complicated all those years ago, as I indicate, as we indicate in the, in the letter to you. There was one column, one category that, as applied today, only applies to the spree. And the spree comes and petitions you for their fee waivers anyway. So why have a category that's just for them? We went over and over and over this and, and looked at considering all kinds of various changes. And this is what we proposed after spending hours as a, as a working team, which we identify the members of in here, hours working at it to try to make it better, less ambiguous, less susceptible to equal protection challenges under the constitution. I, I faced one of those a few years ago, we managed to talk them down. But we just wanted to be, to meet its original purpose, which is to make things simpler, not make things more complicated. And I think we've done that.
Mr. Chair.
I got Vice President Tashnik, then I'll go to you, Councilman Toy, if that's okay?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. Goldstein, what you're telling me is that we're going to make something easier and streamline it?
That's the plan.
Doesn't this seem anti-government? No, I actually looked at the, the previous grid and the proposed grid and this looks great. And it does seem a lot easier to understand, not only for myself, but I'm sure the residents that would be accessing it. So I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent.
We have an approval on consent, anything else from council?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Toy.
I can remember when we put this together and this was Fernum Feenstra at the time, if I stand corrected. And there was some of the things you pointed out, Eric, where there was a lot of confusion with a lot of different community groups coming in. And council had to make some really tough decisions in those days of who got what and who got charged when and how and all that. So this is, my colleague has said, makes it a much easier, clearer kind of thing. Kudos to the mayor's office for taking this project on. Thank you too, Eric, for your indulgence on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think this is, it should be stressed that this is proactive work that saves the city potential resources in the long run. And I think this is, you know, the description that you say is, you know, having, having an eye for something like this and the potential problems is invaluable in the operation of government in terms of looking at how this is structured. I mean, the previous version, it never dawned on me to evaluate it as such, but a rational basis argument would fail most certainly. And that is, that would be the lowest standard of constitutional review. So, good job, Mr. Goldstein, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Goldstein, I do, I have one question, just because, I mean, everything's perfect. Listen, we've been in, we've been working together with process improvement already through different tactics and we've been really breaking walls down. So I love everything about this, the format, everything's good. My question is, is, you know, looking at the, the group number two permit fees, have we ever thought, you know, just because I'm, you know, we are a city filled with incredible service groups and nonprofits, is to make it better for waiving fees? I know you guys put a lot into it, I'm not going to hold this up here, but as you guys continue developing better process, maybe just put an eye to that. Because I think it's imperative to support our, you know, nonprofits that, you know, 30 to 100 bucks means a lot compared to what a big corporation does. And so when we have events like the corn roast or the green meat or everything like that, you know, I just want to make sure that we're giving, we're covering our resources, but giving them as much of a discount as we can. So that's, I'm just going to put on the record, I, I'm not going to change anything here, I think this is great for the process, but maybe the team could just look at maybe adjusting some fees. Because at least for me, I would be open to at least looking at, obviously the city needs to cover costs for, for doing business, but at the same time, if there's a chance to save some for our nonprofits, I'd be all in favor for that. Thank you. Well, if you got something, yeah?
Well, I, I, we did look at that and there was actually discussion about raising the percentage of the discount, lowering the percentage of the discount. And then we started looking at the actual numbers that the discount represented. And we said, this is not a significant number when we go this way or that way, so why don't we just leave that alone? We're doing enough change, let's not do change for change's sake. But that said, we're happy to continue looking at it.
Mr. Goldstein, if you continue your process improvement, having worked with you on cleaning up some process that we've had, especially with clerk's office and everything, I mean, we spent an hour, I think we fixed years long and decades long problems. So I will trust anything that you guys do, just let us know where we can help.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Goldstein, how does an organization go about getting added to this list? You're looking at some of these names that we as council members all know, the JCs, Rand, various service clubs, you know, how do they get their name added to this list? What's that process like?
This, the listings here are examples, so it's not a credential that one gets. This, this, these are lists based upon our existing knowledge. And if someone approaches and says, well, I'm like the JCs or I'm like this group, and they give us information about them and they're asking for a fee waiver administratively, we then, okay, well, that meets the category. You get, you know, are you a 501(c)(3), are you a nonprofit group, are you, you know, then, yes, you get it. We, we are, it's not our intention to list all 501(c)(3)'s. What we have listed here under, in, in that second row are examples. So there, there's no benefit to not being there, there's no, or there's no benefit to being there, there's no disadvantage to not being there.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you, anything further from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, we have an approval on consent, thank you for all the work to staff and everything, this is great. Item number eight is a request to amend council resolution 72-21. Comes to us from the Division of Police to reflect the approved amount of the agreement with Higera Health as an annual spending limit and amend the account that will be utilized from budgeted funds. Good evening, how are you?
Councilman McCullough and the rest of the council, good?
Yes.
Long time no see. Driving by yesterday. Nice job, by the way. Anyway, what we're here for is to just ask for a revision on the original resolution, which is 7221, as you mentioned. The amount that was approved by council on that resolution is $190,000. We don't want to change that amount. All we're asking is that the contractual service account that the money was originally being taken out of be changed to the opioid settlement fund, which is the 284 fund that you see in front of you. And we ask that we make this an annual spending item so that we don't have to renew this again. We're just changing really a couple of words in the original resolution so that it just continues on as long as we have a social worker and/or we add one.
Sounds good, I'm going to go to Councilman Morgan.
Yep, I would like to offer an approving on consent.
All right, we got an approval on consent, anything, Councilman Donovan.
Mr. President, thanks, sir, for being here this evening, appreciate it. How is this program going? I know it's a newer program, something that came up a few years ago.
It came, it started, the idea, when it was first presented was December of 20, 2020, and then we started in 21 and it's been fabulous. We had the original social worker we had was fantastic, she left for another, another job and the fellow that we have now is just tremendous. He rides along with all of our people, goes to runs, I mean, it, he helps out tremendously. He's there five days a week, follows up on his assignments and I can't say enough about him.
That's great, you mentioned about the annual renewals. I'm not sure, do we often do that just for, for, in terms of budgets? I know the finance director's here, maybe she can shed some light, I just want to make sure we don't get in the habit of just approving contracts.
This, this isn't a contract, this is just the approval for spending of money in that particular fund. The actual contract itself, when it will be renewed, will still be taken out of that fund. So it's not, this isn't a contract with Higera, this is just a renewal of the resolution to switch funds and make it permanent. Former Finance Director Slater suggested that we use the opioid fund instead of the contractual services fund. And that came about when I talked to finance already and they're in agreement that we change that and just add the verbiage that it's annual so that regardless of the contract, contracts that we are approving and/or going into with Higera, it comes out of this account and we don't have to come.
This is just changing general ledger accounts, if I'm right.
That makes great sense and I appreciate that explanation, I'm satisfied. Great, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wimbuzinski.
Hi, yes, thank you for being here. I was excited to see this program mentioned because it was a huge conversation when it started and I think it's really important. So I'd, I'd love if you could just take a few minutes and, you know, for those of us who don't have day-to-day interactions with, you know, our, our first responders and kind of share, what are the circumstances that our caseworker, you know, social worker is helping with? You know, how has it improved citizen engage, you know, engagement or interactions?
I can give you our perspective from our police department, but also knowing the surrounding police departments that also are, have social workers embedded with them. Our social worker actually rides along with our men and women on day shift and he comes in on midnights to ride with them to get to know the troops. Now, he switches around, it's not every day he's in the car, but he will respond from his office. He has his own radio, he has everything in his office and he will get on the air when he hears a run and say, hey, I'm going to respond to this run. Sometimes we'll pick him up, most of the time he'd be in a police car with somebody else. These runs are all different kinds of runs of people in mental crisis. When Jonathan gets there, he's there with the officers and they take care of the run, the referral and/or the report, depending on the run, if they have to go to the hospital, Jonathan will handle the handoff of the patient to the hospital. And/or if that's not the case and somebody needs to be referred for help and/or taken somewhere else, he handles that paperwork. And there's other instances where he's not available and/or he gets the police reports and follows up. But in every instance where he has a report and/or responds to these runs, he follows up with that person or individual or organization that has dealt with what we've already handed off to him. He's, he's phenomenal. In other cities, they do similar things, but in some cities their social workers do not go out with the officers. Looking around our area, I would put Jonathan right there with the best of them. He's committed to what he does, he takes it very seriously and he's taken it so seriously in the police department, he's also become a reserve police officer with us, which has nothing to do with this work. But on the other hand, you know what our reserves do on other occasions, totally separate, but that's how much he cares. And I can't say enough about him and/or the program. It's, it helps out tremendously when it comes to knowing the person on the other end of the phone.
And, and I don't know if this is something that you could speak on or not, but just in, in general knowledge, do you think that it would be, you know, do you think the workload is appropriate for one person or do you think that it's something?
Right now, yep, I've had personal conversations with him and that's another reason for the funds that we have in there, based on his, what we pay Higera on a monthly basis, because his salary comes out of this fund. Should we add another person or have to do this mid-year, we would still have enough in that fund to continue to hire too. But right now, he does a fantastic job and I don't see needing another one right now, but that's not to say we wouldn't in the future. And a lot of that is just due to his dedication and hard work.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Jolly.
Hey, I just, I remember when we were originally considering whether or not to do this and I appreciate the fact that you're here now reporting out that has been a success.
Absolutely, 100%.
And this goes, you know, to the level of recognizing how the Livonia Police Department does approach community policing and taking steps that are not, you know, sometimes the normal or the established ways of doing things to add value for the community and the department and the people involved. You know, it's being on the forefront really, right? But with this particular case, I think this is, you know, when we originally talked about this, you know, a lot of the argument recognized that a lot of these calls have to do with mental health crises. And treating those in real time as opposed to punting them down the road or sometimes having somebody go through the entire criminal justice process only to receive it on the backend in recognition of what was actually going on. So I just think it's great that you've reported out on it and I'm glad to hear it's a success and thank you for being involved and everybody else as well.
Thank you.
We do have a approving a while ago on consent, correct? All right, so we have an approval on consent. Hey, right now, I'm going to go to the audience, any audience communication on this matter? Council, is there any other further question or comments? Seeing none, you have an approving on consent, good to see you, thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
And if you want to come back the next meeting, you can, but you don't have to.
Perfect, thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Nice answer.
All right, moving on to item number nine is a request to accept the FY23 FEMA Assistance to Firefighter Grant, the AFG, and authorize the purchase of thermal imager equipment. This comes to us from Livonia Fire and Rescue in order to enhance emergency response capabilities from grant and budgeted funds. What's going on?
Well, good evening, how are you?
Very good, how are you?
Good, tell us a little bit more about this one thermal imaging stuff. Tell us a little bit more about this fun thermal imaging stuff.
Technology continues to improve light years. So, let me give you an example. If you pull out the original iPhone, came out in roughly 2010, 2011, what kind of pictures did that take? Now, I don't know, I had a flip phone until about three years ago.
I, I think Laura might still have that one, so let's ask her.
But it did not take very good pictures compared to the new iPhone 16, which just got rolled out this, earlier today, much higher resolution. Currently, the fire engines have thermal imaging cameras that we received through an AFG grant in 2011. I can tell you, they have exceeded their service life, they are no longer supported by the manufacturer, the batteries do not really hold a charge, and while they were great for their time, current technology offers much better solutions. In an effort to seek alternate funding, the fire chief asked for a volunteer to please step forward who would take on the task of grant writing. And I can promise you, the next time the fire chief asks for a volunteer, I'm going to step back. But I've learned a lot about grant writing. So, every year, through the Department of Homeland Security, the Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program awards approximately $300 million worth of equipment and operational needs to, to fire departments all over this country. We applied for a micro grant. That category is for operations and safety equipment capped at $75,000. We were awarded $71,428.57. A city match of just over $3,500 will enable us to buy 20 thermal cameras. That would let every firefighter on duty each day in the city of Livonia go into a structured fire with a state-of-the-art camera. It enables them to see through smoky conditions, can find trapped victims, can spot dangerous conditions as they're developing. We can observe the flow of the superheated gases, and the science of firefighting is showing that that really predicts what's going to happen in the next two minutes of a fire is, is just how those superheated gases, where they're moving, and, and how quickly they're moving. And it'll help us find the seat of the fire, put it out, and get out of a very dangerous situation. As I said, in 2011, a $60,000 grant bought five cameras that have exceeded their service life. This grant, 20 cameras purchased through Municipal Emergency Services, or MES, they're a source well provider, and in accordance with, where did I put it? In accordance with Section 3.04.140 Echo 4 of the Livonia Code of Ordinances. We can waive the bidding process as it's cooperative purchaser. I just wanted to read that.
That was, that was.
Thank you.
I would just end right with that.
So, I ask that you approve us accepting this grant money and spending the additional balance, which, if we're able to do this purchase in September, when the cameras are on sale, the money coming from budgeted funds from the fire department would be $3,711.35.
Before I hand it over to my colleagues, I got to tell you, that, that's incredible. And, you know, looking at the, the ordinance that, that does that, but no, everybody out there with grant funding and my deals and cooperative purchasing agreements and grant writing, I, I like to go above and beyond at least just, you know, there's a lot of time and work that goes into it. And honestly, the amenities we're going to get for that with the new infrared machines, I, I mean, I, in my field, we've got drones doing the, the infrared now. I mean, like you said, it changes, so hopefully, as the technology changes, you don't have to wait, you know, close to 15 years to do so. But no, this is, this is phenomenal, and the amount of money that the city's on the hook for is, is nothing. So, I'm going to hand it over to Councilman Morgan.
Yes, I think this is a great program. Fine job on that grant program also, by the way. That's, that saves the city about, what, $300,000?
Well, that's.
Something like that, that's what my head says.
Yeah, we got that one coming up next. We'll talk about that.
Oh, okay, that's another one?
Yep.
All right, well, whatever you save this year, this sounds like a great program. It'll also save lives, you know, we don't want our firm going into fires that they don't know what they're expecting, so, yep, I will offer an approving on consent.
Perfect. Counsel, anything else? Anything from the audience on this? I will say that the next time we do have council training, we can bring out these fun toys and see how cool they are, right?
I don't see why not, yeah.
Because I know we did that. That was always a fun time for us electeds to, to really get an idea of, you know, the incredible stuff you guys do on a day in and day out, so. I'm going to move on to item number 10, right, is a request to accept my Leo FY2024 Fire Gear Grant and authorize the purchase of turnout gear and boots, again, from Livonia Fire and Rescue in order to enhance firefighter, firefighter safety. The floor is yours again.
Thank you very much, sir. While having done such a fine job pursuing that federal grant, the chief then turned his eyes to the state program. In the fiscal year '24 budget, the Michigan State Legislature made a $15 million appropriation to purchase an additional set of firefighting gear for each full-time firefighter in the This program is being administered through the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunities, which is why it appears as a grant. It is essentially an appropriation program, so fortunately for me, the grant application was a little less crucial. This program would pay up to $3,500 per full-time firefighter for the purchase of an additional set of gear and boots. We submitted for 87 personnel, 302,500. We were approved for 85 personnel. The state decided that the fire chief and deputy chief did not qualify as full-time firefighters, though I would disagree because at any given moment, we are all ready to leap into action. Thus, we were approved for 297,500. Firefighters need an additional set of gear. Quite frankly, build, modern building construction relies more and more heavily on synthetic materials. If I could go back in time and fight a fire, a legacy fire from the 1970s with the gear I have today, I would not worry about my job because it was wool. Carpets were natural fibers. Furniture was made out of wood framing. But today, everything is derived from plastics, and under superheated conditions, everything turns into aerosolized napalm. And once a firefighter's been in those conditions, they need to get those contaminants off their gear, not just to reduce the flammability hazard of their gear, but those toxins can be absorbed in the skin. Firefighters, as a profession, have a greatly increased risk of cancer through skin absorption. So, an additional set of turnout gear would enable firefighters to decontaminate one set of gear while they have another set ready to go. Once again, we'll be purchasing through MES Incorporated, which is a source well provider. It's a no-bid consortium vendor. So, I stand before you today to ask you to accept state funding in the amount of 297,500. Allow us to spend the balance of that cost, 5,595.32, from budgeted funds from our uniform budget. Total cost of the program, 303,095.32, yet only costing Livonia taxpayers just under $5,600.
You've just, between these last two items, we're close to a half a million dollars of government funds with the city being on the hook for less than nine grand.
I do what I can, sir.
I mean, that is incredible. And you know what? For the millions of viewers at home watching this, and that's why we have the best police and fire around, good job. I mean, I'm not trying to sway where we're going to go with this, but Councilman Donovan.
Mr. President, I hope that the fire chief sends, sends you to do all the presentations for the fire department. I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues. I'd like to reiterate, it's great to see grant writing taken advantage of, and I hope the rest of the city tries to do that as much as they possibly can because, like Council President McCullough just mentioned, we've saved the taxpayers, the local taxpayers, hundreds of thousands of dollars because the fire department's efforts. And I know a lot of staff here in the city of Livonia are trying to do that, and I think it's so critical that we continue to bolster that grant writing process to save those dollars for the city. Great job. Thanks, Mr. President.
Councilman Toye.
I just want to say to you that, thank you for all your service. This and ambulance service as well is just outstanding. The training that you've allowed us to peek in on through the years and suit up and, you know, go and witness some of the stuff is unbelievable, what you guys go through and cutting the cars and people out of the cars and all the apparatuses you have to use. It, it makes it so much easier when you come to us, not only because you're saving us money, which is huge, but because we're understanding it more as elected officials, and we can convey that. I was just talking about those plastics to someone the, the other day about how we were going past something that was burnt, and I said, "I wonder how much plastic furniture they had there and what, what they put that men and women through that were trying to, you know, put out that fire." And, and they didn't know a thing about that, and it was just kind of cool to, to have that exchange. And the only reason I have that exchange is because of those experiences you allowed us as elected officials to experience with you, so thank you again, and that is invaluable for any council in the future. Please keep that up. Thanks.
Well, I certainly will. Long day sitting at my desk, writing those grants. I look back on those times when we get to get in the burn chamber or cut up cars, and I say, "Well, that's why I keep doing this part of my job, so I can go out there and have fun."
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else from council? And if anybody in the audience has an issue with approving this, then come talk to council, please, no. Is there any comments from the audience? Thank you again. Thanks for waiting, hanging out, and thanks for all the hard work. I mean, it, it's incredible. I mean, we hand out a lot of accommodations. I think we just ran out of frames, but I would definitely be giving you one. That's a great deal. No, it's wonderful. We're, we're happy, we're glad to have you. Congratulations.
Well, I grew up here in Livonia. I lived here until about two years ago, when my wife tricked me into moving to South Lyon, and I keep fighting to get back in Livonia.
Did you go to Belt Lane?
No, I went to Catholic Central.
Ooh.
And as a former Wine Palace employee, I, I appreciate you jabbing Mr. Danek. That's awesome. It was only about three decades ago that I was there.
That's awesome. Well, thank you again. All right, we're going to move on to item number 11 is a request for council approval on a proposed lot split. This comes to us from the Department of Assessment for the property located on the northeast corner of Schoolcraft and Richfield. This is also to waive the deficiency in lot area for both parcels A and B. Mr. Tormina.
Thank you. This proposed lot split, as you indicated, is at the corner of Schoolcraft and Richfield. This parcel is generally described as the south half of Lot 27 and the south half of Lot 28 of Zimmerman and Porter Schoolcraft Estate Subdivision. So, this is an old plat, 1941. The zoning is RUF. The, the current parcel or parent parcel measures 150 by 150 for 22,500 square feet or half an acre, so it's conforming as it exists today under the RUF District Regulations. As you can see, the, the parcel would be split in two equal halves or two equal parts. Parcels A and B, parcel A being the north parcel, would measure 75 feet by 120, or 150 feet, as would parcel B. They are deficient in terms of lot area, since each parcel would measure 11,250 square feet, where the ordinance requires 15,000 square feet. In addition, parcel B has a 75-foot lot width, where the ordinance would require additional frontage, additional depth of that lot along Schoolcraft Road, so it's the reason deciding this before you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina. Councilman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Tormina, when looking at the plat map, the original plat map, those, those lots are oriented off of Schoolcraft, and it looks like there's two plats, correct?
Two lots, if that's what your question is, yes. As I indicated, it's part of lots 28 and 27.
So, ironically, what the petitioner's asking for is to take that original plat map that has two lots, 75 by 150 and 75 by 150, and reorient those along Richfield, the residential road, and make two parcels. I think it makes sense. You drive by that lot, I know the petitioner's here, it's quite a dilapidated corner, it's, it's very ugly and overgrown, and it, it looks rough. Actually, I think the trees were cut down by the existing owner. I know you're not the owner yet, but it, it looks pretty rough. There's trash everywhere, and I think it'd be a great new entrance to that subdivision as opposed to some office space or some commercial building that'd be built off the freeway. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, I just have a quick question for the petitioner. Is there going to, are you going to put like a row of trees or a berm, something along Schoolcraft Road, so it's not quite as noisy to the residents and things like that?
Yes, I was planning on that, yes. For sure.
Was there already an approving on consent?
I think this one, we do need to have five, so we have to put it on the regular.
Okay, well, I'd like to offer an approving on the regular.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Councilwoman Buzinski.
I just wondered, have you talked to the neighboring residents about this one?
I, actually, I did after the last time I was here for the other piece. I did speak to the gentleman that's not right next door, but one lot north of that one, and I asked him, I said, "I'm looking at acquiring this and doing what I'm doing." He says, "Yeah, I have absolutely no problem with that." He was the only one I spoke to.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, we have an approving on regular with this. We do have to show five on it, so we have to have a vote.
Okay, that's the 23rd?
That is going to be the 23rd. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number 12 is a request to establish new classification. Comes to us from the Civil Service Department for the position of a Budget and Fiscal Services Manager. Good evening, Ms. Lichtenberg. How are you?
Good evening. It's good to be here. What I bring to you this evening is a request to add a new classification to the Finance Department, which would be for a Budget and Fiscal Services Manager. This position really would be an analytical and more of a forward-thinking and a position that's focused on bringing transparent information to you and to the public, building on some of the things that you've seen already, just to make sure that we are able to do deeper dives into some of the information and provide you with the best information available. This position would, again, fall under the Finance umbrella, would be focused on developing the budget and also providing more in-depth reporting. It would be a similar classification to our current Purchasing Manager position, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Counsel? I do have one. So, no, I, I love this fact that, you know, I know you've been on board over probably a year now, right? Or has it been a year?
No.
Not even six months, seven months, eight months?
A little, about six months now.
All right, the reason I bring that up is, you know, you're coming into a role, you're looking at process improvement, and honestly, the, every budget meeting that I've had for the last five years, I think we've had the same, and it's nothing against Mr. Slater, but I think it's the same binder from 1982 or 86 or whatever it was, and this, I'm sure this position, I'm not, you know, you can answer that, but is going to provide the transparency, update, CIPs, capital outlay, everything that can help us, probably budget planning, long-term capital planning. If that's all that's entailed, I, I love the idea, so I'm hoping that you, is that, is this type of position?
Absolutely. It's really advancing what we currently do and really being able to provide more, more color commentary, really, and just to make things more meaningful and more understandable.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's great, and like I said, these are the things that, if this is going to help Livonia and the budget process and help your team, these are the things that come forward. Counsel can look at it. I'm going to hand it over to Councilman Morgan, and then we'll start the, with other councilmen.
Yes, I, I have a question for you. How many employees do you have that you oversee currently?
So, currently, within the Finance Division, there is the Purchasing Manager and a Program Supervisor. On the Accounting Division, there are, I believe, six, 15. On the Accounting Division, there are, um, I believe, six, 15, which includes accounts payable. Is that number right?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Did you say six?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. So, you have 15 people you supervise plus two other people that are in the Finance?
Right. So, a total, a total of 17 currently.
Okay. And, you know, I mean, this is, um, uh, I guess this is, for me, you know, the city has been operating for many, many years with the amount of employees that we have attached to Finance, and, uh, Finance has done very well. Um, they've put together the budget and they're able to provide everything that we need and put the, uh, budget together on time and get it to us. Um, and adding, since we currently have 17, we want to add another employee at, what was the pay range, uh, you're looking at here? Uh, let me just go back to where I was.
This would be a range of 79,000 to 92,000, a little over 92.
And you're, what you're saying is that we currently, this is someone you absolutely need to be able to put in, put these things in place. I mean, we don't have enough employees, 17 employees, that can...
So, those 17 employees, in addition to putting together the budget, also handle all of the city's payroll, all of the accounts payable, the water and sewer billing, all of the general ledger activities, any billing outside of the, um, the normal billing for water and sewer, um, activities, reconcile all the bank accounts, the investment accounts. Um, it's a wide range, a wide, wide array of activities that happen. Um, and, to be honest, there are a lot of processes that are currently in place that, um, need to be updated. And, um, we have the opportunity to do that with the right people in the right seats. Um, we do have some upcoming, um, transitions that are happening. So, every time that we get to a reflection point where we, um, are looking to fill a position, we are very mindful and careful of how that position is filled. So, could we get by without this position? Yes, and we have in the past. Will this be a value-added position that will bring additional, um, transparency and just, and, uh, reporting complexity to you? Yes.
Okay. So, as the city's Chief Financial Officer, um, you know, I mean, we, we are currently in kind of a budget crunch. We're spending a lot of money. We're trying to reduce the costs, and I just am wondering if it's a prudent thing to do to spend this type of money on a new position that's going to be more, more likely a forever position, correct? This isn't a termed position. This is a new hiring employee that we'd be bringing aboard, when we already have 17.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Vice President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, I'm always wary anytime we're gonna be adding to our government, and so, is there anything that we're gonna be eliminating or consolidating to maybe compensate for this additional add, I guess?
So, really, one of the things that this position will bring to the table is another set of eyes that can really be giving a higher level overview of, are there ways that we can be saving money? Are there ways that we can be consolidating the things that we're doing? It's, it's a different look. Much of what happens in the Finance Department is really recording what has already happened. What we really want to make sure that we're spending time and energy on is looking towards what is coming. And to make sure that we are building forecasts that are giving us an accurate, uh, view of what is coming, that allows us the opportunity to potentially save money by, um, not being reactive on everything that we do, being proactive. Um, and that's really something that, as you skinny down your operations and as you are working with, um, really a very, a very thin team, um, and 17 may not sound like a skinny-down team, but for an organization that's this size, it's unusual not to have, um, one or more people that are working on this side of the financial operations as well.
Um, thank you for that. I understand the value add that would come clearly to your department and to us as well to understand, but as I'm gonna get asked by the residents, what the value add would be for them as well. And so, I guess that's where I want to make sure we can explain the benefits to our residents. So, is the goal here to spend money to save money, in essence, over time?
Yes.
I mean, that's what we're boiling it down to.
Absolutely.
Who's handling some of these responsibilities now, or are they just not being done? Is this something we'd like to add to the program?
Um, I would say some of them are being done strictly in the CFO position. Um, others are not being done. Um, I think that we can provide much more meaningful data to you that can help you make much more informed decisions, um, and to do that in a proactive way.
Mm-hmm. No, I appreciate that, and that's, that's what I'm just trying to boil down to, 'cause I know every time we've had a presentation from you, it's been fabulous. So, I mean, I appreciate that. Um, I'm just concerned with, you know, the extra spend that we're being asked for and the growing of the department. But, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, I'll go to Councilman Toy, then Councilwoman Bezansky.
Oh, okay.
And then Councilman Jolly.
Yeah. Um, it's getting late. Um, anyhow, um, do other cities or municipalities, I should say, perhaps round our size, do they utilize folks like this in structure?
In my, yes. In my previous position, um, I had two full-time, uh, budget analysts at a city that was smaller than Livonia. Previous to that, I've had, worked in cities where there are full, uh, Budget Director positions. Um, I've held Budget Director positions in similar-sized cities. Um, so, it, it's uncommon not to have that position.
For a city particularly our size of, what, 94,000 and some residents, pretty much, um, perhaps, yeah, whatever.
I think most cities this size would have dedicated budget staff.
And in time, um, as, as you progressed with this kind of venue of things, do you see it eliminating other processes and, and maybe making them smaller? If not, I, you don't want to eliminate jobs, maybe some shifts as we go through this is...
Yes.
Would this type of person be able to forecast throughout when, like, for instance, when we all submit budgets as department heads, when I was a department head, um, you go through them and, you know, you're nice and you're not nice to us? No. Um, but I'm teasing you, but in all, in all seriousness, would that help? This person could also aid in that to evaluate future and present?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Um, we have a very, uh, a very strong team, but we do have processes that, uh, need to move forward. And you can't move processes forward, um, without focusing on that.
Yeah, and, and your department plays a large role in this city, and so do we, because you're, you're proposing and we dispose, if you will, and, um, and, and that's so crucial as we go through these times of, changing times. I, I mean, I have to do it myself in my business of what, what to order next, why not to order that for the Valentine's Day, or was the weather bad? I mean, was that cause and effect, you know, all those things that are into it. I can't imagine doing it for a city this size. This is, this is huge. Um, and, and to some of my colleagues' points, I realize we have people in different roles, but they're, they're different task-orientated, it sounds like, that it's a specific task they do, rather than think outside boxes and things like that, if I'm right.
Yes, yes. The vast majority of our department are made up of, of clerk-level positions that are frontline, dealing with customer issues on a daily basis.
Okay.
Um, I have a Chief Accountant, a Deputy Chief Accountant, and, um, three other accountants.
All right.
Those are the individuals that are really doing the accounting for the entire city.
Okay.
The rest of the staff are clerks that either are doing specific tasks such as a bank reconciliation or, uh, dealing with particular pieces of that whole accounting puzzle, or they are on the phone interfacing with the residents. Um, and those are hugely important tasks, um, but those are repetitive tasks, and they are, again, making sure that things are recorded properly that have happened.
Sure. Okay.
The next step is, is that forward look.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I got, Councilwoman Bezansky, then I've got, or Councilman Donovan, then Councilman Morgan.
Uh, so, thank you for your presentation on this, and, and, you know, it has been mentioned before, uh, I believe you kind of went over it, um, to some extent at our recent Budget and Finance meeting. A lot of things are happening in Livonia. Um, you know, we've got the new senior center project. We're talking about, uh, the bond for New City Hall, uh, you know, public safety improvements, uh, downtown town center, um, projects along Newburg Village, too, um, just to name a few of the big forward, future-thinking projects that take a lot of time and involve budgeting and Finance Department. And across the board, as we talk about the future and what's coming to Livonia, I always like to emphasize maintaining the things that we have, which is something you also have to do. And I think we, as a council, need to provide our Finance and Budget Department with the resources to be able to maintain the services of the day-to-day the residents have come to expect and that need to continue, while also planning for these big-picture, future projects that are gonna help move the city into the future. I think that this position makes sense. Um, I think Debbie has shown incredible leadership in her six months. It's hard for us to even remember that it's only been a handful of months, because time and again, she's coming to us with presentations that are thoroughly laid out in a way that's really approachable, that we can share with residents, that they can clearly understand what it means when we talk about a notice of intent for a bond, or when we talk about, um, what our, our fiscal state is and our budget moving forward, um, for the city, uh, various expenditures, um, that come before us. Um, you know, I think she's proven to have a strong understanding of what Livonia is, especially in such a short period of time. I think we want to make sure that she continues to have the tools she needs to be successful. Um, in this position, it is so crucial to, um, you know, just the foundation of what the city does. I mean, our, our budget, our, our tax dollars, that's the Finance Department. So, I'd like to put an approving on, uh, regular, uh, if there's no objections from my colleagues.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Lichtenberg, for being here this evening. Um, where exactly is the money going to come from?
So, this position, um, will come, will be half-funded from the General Fund and half-funded by the Water and Sewer Fund. Um, that's because there are a lot of accounting issues and budgeting related to water and sewer that will be carried into, uh, this position.
And from your opinion, as our CFO, are we being put in a financially difficult position? As some of my colleagues have mentioned, we're spending a lot of money for good things, and I've, I've been, uh, supportive of just, uh, a majority of those things we're moving for as a community, but there has to be an emphasis on fiscal responsibility, and there has to be an emphasis on keeping taxes low. Uh, residents, you know, they're feeling the pinch, and as we try to, to do more innovative things in our community, it's gonna take money. So, I really think we have to be intentional about trying to save what we can save. So, that leads me to my next question, the ROI, the return on this investment. And as one of my colleagues mentioned, the goal of this position is to create a, I'm gonna take your words, a strategic person that can dive deeper into saving money and finding savings for the, in the budget? Is, is that basically the, the job description?
That is a part of it, yes, absolutely.
And the other part is, in layman terms, what is the, what is, again, the, I know you've already touched on it, but the, really hit at home, what exactly do you want this position to do?
It's providing the reporting, the forecasting, the, the data points that you haven't seen. I, I've provided them to you on a piecemeal basis as we've discussed different topics, but it needs to become part of the fiber of what you are seeing on a regular basis. Um, and I appreciate each and every one of you being concerned about the financial impact. Um, you're preaching to the choir here. Um, and I, I will be bringing you a balanced budget that factors in, uh, this position that does not have tax increases, that is focused on, uh, those critical things that we've been talking about in the early budget sessions. This position is only going to enhance my ability to continue to ensure that the dollars are spent in the way that are gonna best serve the residents of this community, and that is always going to be first and foremost what I want to be doing for the community.
And, yeah, and that's great to hear, 'cause we've kept the city of Livonia for such a long time, the, the legacy, so to speak, of, of being a fiscally responsible community. We have the lowest taxable mileage as a city in Wayne County. Now, that may present some problems, because there's things that we do want to do as a community, and what I think you're saying is, while we're trying to keep that, that low tax rate in our city, but also bringing on somebody that can help find money in, in a rather large budget to pay for those things as opposed to going out for tax increases?
Absolutely.
And then my last question will be, is, is, I know there's a range, I think you said 70-some thousand to 90,000. That would determine on step increases. If you were to want to do a higher step, you'd have to come before City Council to ask for that step, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a couple of follow-up questions. Um, having this half-funded from the Water and Sewer Fund, what kind of impact or risk are we gonna be taking, taking, using the money that's in that fund to pay for this? Or do we have any risk by doing that?
There is no risk based on what the, um, the assigned tasks will be.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not gonna short ourselves in that fund.
It's absolutely appropriate.
Okay. Um, is there gonna be somewhere, and I guess when we see the budget, we'll know, but, or is there gonna be, uh, cutting somewhere else or trimming the, the fat, I guess, from something else to kind of help pay for this in the general as well? Is that what we're kind of aiming for?
So, um, so, yes, there are, there are some other areas of the budget that, that have been, um, adjusted.
Okay. That's what I'm looking for. And I think you answered it with Mr. Donovan and saying that we're, we're not looking to increase anything else. I trust your fiscal stewardship, I do. I just have to ask these questions and make sure that we are, we are right there. Um, so, we're looking at, you know, not only the salary, but with benefits, a hit to our budget of probably right around 120 grand, depending by the time we get it all figured in. And I just, we need to make sure that we're dotting all our i's and crossing our t's on this before we approve. So, I appreciate you taking the questions from us. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. So, uh, Council, anything further? We do have an appro, oh, Councilman Morgan.
Yes, I, I just had a couple of follow-up questions here, because I didn't, I didn't hear what you said. How many accountants do you have in your office?
I have three accountants. I have one that oversees, uh, the Water Division, one that oversees the Personnel Activities payroll, and one that handles everything else. Then I also have a Deputy Chief Accountant and my Then I also have a deputy chief accountant and my chief accountant.
So, we have a total of seven accountants that work for the city?
Five, plus myself.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said three for accountants, one for water, one for payroll, and then you have a deputy and one other.
I have a chief accountant.
Yep.
The deputy chief accountant.
Okay.
And then three accountants.
Okay.
One that oversees the water division, one that oversees payroll, and one that oversees accounts payable and other activities.
Okay, and in this position, is this going to be an accountant position, or is this?
This is a separate position, which is why I'm here this evening.
I mean, is it going to be an accountant?
It's going to be classified as a budget manager, so it has a different classification from accountants. So, currently, we have within our civil service structure the classification of a budget Rather than filling that position, which is a higher-level position, I am asking to have this position created because I feel like it is the best fit. It is a better fit than that higher-level position. That would be at a, if I had just said I would like to fill the existing classification, a budget director, that would have been at a higher pay scale. This would fall under my supervision within the finance division.
Okay, all right. I understand what you're saying. You know what I mean, and I do think you do a fine job. I just, and I don't want you to misunderstand me, but I just think that in these times, everyone is being asked to do more with less, and bringing on another hundred-thousand-dollar position is, that's a big step for us in this city, especially with all the spending we're doing and the changes that are going to take place here over the next couple of years. So, I do have concerns about that, and if I could think of any more questions, I will get in touch with you. But, yeah, I just think that we've done so much with what we currently have that I do have concerns about bringing on another hundred-thousand-dollar position, so thank you.
If I may, I know Councilman Donovan has something, but I just want to at least put on the record right now, I was very somewhat frustrated with an item last meeting where we were all subject matters on chillers. We had no issue, we trusted the administration. Right now, we have a new finance director who's coming in with a whole new vision, and I've worked with Deb in the past, and I've seen a lot of her work. I mean, in Novi, we had our capital improvement hooked to our GIS that citizens could be transparent, could go on and say, hey, in 2026, the city's proposing to replace this playground, this 2027, these roads are going to be done. The transparency right now compared, our budget that we have listed and published is so antiquated, it is, try to go in there and try to find something. These new budget documents, and I'm telling you all, go look, go look at different cities and see what's out there. They're much more vibrant, they're much more transparent, they pretty much dumb it down exactly what the residents want to see, and it helps us, too. I mean, you break out every project, so as me, as a facilities manager or director, I come up with, say, thirty projects a year that I want, and it's my wish list, and, you know, finance director might say, hey, you're going to get like two of them, or three of them, or four of them, but I have to go through such reporting, and the ones that do get approved have huge documents, and I'm sure that this is exactly what your budget analyst that you're proposing is going to do. And you know what? It's going to help us, it helps us, it brings it down and shows exactly all the general ledger numbers. It's going to show all of our, it probably helps our bond rating right now. Once you can show the analytics, and it will show different things, it's going to show all the projects that we have up, and for us right here, like I said, I look at it and I go, someone's coming in new, we've got a new vision, she's saying, I need this, and we're questioning it. I've got no issues with it, but let's not be hypocritical compared to different items. We want to be subject matters on certain things, then carried across the board. That's all I'm saying. Right now, we have our finance director saying, we've all agreed that she's doing a great job, and right now, she's asking for more leverage to make finance really good in the city and have more transparency, and I, for one, am going to wholeheartedly support it. So, just putting that on the record. I'm going to go to Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know these meetings can be long, but this is why we have study meetings, to ask these questions on TV so that the residents can hear what's happening, and we can deliberate, and I'm happy that we're not discussing this maybe at a committee and kind of talking about it later on. Happy you having a lot of questions tonight, and that's why you're, the director, you get paid the big bucks, and that's why we're council and get paid the big bucks. And we have to ask these questions, and I'm happy to. You made a little note, you mentioned the budget director position, and that was interesting to me. So, what you're saying is, already in our civil service structure, we've created a position, a budget director, which essentially is this maybe, and you're choosing not to do that because that would cost more money. So, you're choosing to essentially create a position similar, maybe, and I don't want to take your words out of context, but essentially creating a budget director position at a lower cost, saving money, but ultimately doing some of the things that our council president mentioned, budget transparency, and my biggest thing. And I think if you can do this and promise us this, that you can, you know, find areas to trim fat, I know you mentioned you have five accountants that all seem busy, I mean, I can only imagine the amount of transactions that we do on a daily basis, a weekly basis, a monthly basis, in all those accounting areas that you mentioned. So, I hope you can trim fat, but can you maybe shed a little bit more light on bringing some transparency to us, that budget director position, and how you're going to save us money by creating this new position?
Yes, so first, just speaking to the budget director position that already exists within civil service, the main reason that I didn't feel that it was the right time to bring that position is, as I mentioned, we have a lot of processes that need to evolve. I've got a great team that are highly skilled, and they need to be brought along to, as part of that evolution, and they have already shown that they are fully capable of doing that, and I would like to promote from within whenever possible. And within the current staffing structure, I know that I can fill a budget manager position that I'm bringing to you with a highly qualified professional that already is part of the City of Livonia organization and is a key staff member. I know that with the right training and development, we're going to continue to move our team forward. They've already shown that they are one-hundred percent capable of taking things to the next level. So, within this position, many of the things that you see as we are continuing to see grants come before you, those are things that start with the finance department, and they end with the finance department. So, every grant that comes in is more that is being handled within the finance department, and we are helping to guide those processes. This position will be key in helping to assist with some of those issues. They will be working hand-in-hand with the purchasing director. They will be helping as we talk about the advancements that we want to see in our CIP, in the capital management, making sure that when we're getting ready, when a submission is made for, say, having a parking lot repaved, that if there's another parking lot being repaved over here, that we're making sure we're bidding those out together, that we're getting the economies of scale. And we have people that are focusing on pieces of the puzzle, but if you don't have people who can be a little bit above, you know, if I'm at the ten-thousand-foot level, I still, I need somebody at the five-thousand-foot level to be another set of eyes to put those pieces together. Those are the kinds of things that this position is going to be able to do that is going to generate cost savings. I've already seen it in the fact that we brought in a very well-experienced purchasing manager. That position has already paid for itself, and will continue to do that over and over. I have no doubt that this position, through the ways that they will be assisting and working with other departments, will see very similar cost savings that will happen across the board.
And I appreciate that, and I hope, I wish there was a way to quantify that, because we, as council members, we get the phone calls, the emails from residents about taxes and spending money, and we're not insulated from residents. We have to deal with them face-to-face on a lot of times a daily basis. So, it's not easy to sometimes interact with residents that are saying, hey, my taxes are going up, my food bill's going up, my gas bill's going up, and the city's spending more money. So, if you can, I wish you could try to quantify it somehow and show us a year from now, look, we saved the city X amount of money because of this position, and maybe we'll be surprised and you can. But I understand the intent here, and I hope, I hope that it happens that way to find areas to cut fat, economies of scale. I think that's important for a city that spends, you know, as much money as we do, but I just can't harp on enough, we have to be fiscally responsible, especially in the future with some of the things we're doing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan.
Mr. President.
Councilman Morgan.
Yes, I'd just like to kind of rebut what you said there, your last statement regarding being hypocritical, and you know what? I've been on this council for a little bit now, and I got to tell you that we have never approved a position like this for the amount without being very critical of what we're doing before we accept that. So, I don't think that these questions are unreasonable, and, you know, I want to make sure that I make the best decision I can. So, all my questions regarding this, how many people are there? How many accountants she has? I want to know that because I think the citizens want to know that. So, there's not, there's no, I have never approved a position of a hundred-thousand dollars without asking some questions or getting to the bottom of it, or knowing exactly what I'm going to be voting for. So, I just need that to be out there, that your last statement, I didn't feel was appropriate or where it was targeted or whatnot, but I just think that as the chief financial advisor of the city, she should be able to answer those questions, and she did appropriately, so.
If I may, obviously, just to rebut, I'm going to move on because, but if you look at the record, the last meeting, I'm not going to get into an argument here at the dais, but at the end of the day, it is our job to do checks and balances, and that item, I wanted to study further before we contributed four-hundred-thousand dollars, and I was denied that, so that is fine. Let's move on unless there's more questions or concerns. If you want to rebut, you can, I have no issues, but.
Well, I'm just saying that we have plenty of time to do what you're referring to, to look that over, and secondly, that is not a forever position. This is a position that could potentially go on for twenty to twenty-five years.
Fair enough. Listen, we could sit here and debate it all day long, and that's saying, the record's there, and people can make their own decisions. Council, do we have any more questions or comments? We do have an approving for the regular. Do we have any audience communication on this item? Seeing none, you have an approving on the regular. We'll see you back here on, I think it's the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number thirteen. Oh, hang on, I should go to the, oh, no, I went to the audience, sorry, it's been a night. Request, number thirteen is a request to waive the sealed bid process and approve an agreement with Tyler Technologies. This comes to us from the finance department for credit card and e-check payment software, hardware, and support from budgeted funds. Hey, good to see you again. The floor's yours.
Good to see you. So, the city currently accepts credit card payments for water and sewer customer payments. The service provider that we currently use is BridgePay. We have received notification that as of December thirty-first of this year, BridgePay will no longer be supported by Tyler Technologies, who is our ERP system. In light of that relationship coming to an end, we have gone through a series of evaluating other credit card providers that we use within the city and looking for the best fit for a replacement for those transactions. We have received a quote from Tyler Technologies, or Tyler Payments, which is a fully-integrated processor that works directly with Tyler Technologies and our New World logo system. So, this would be the most customer-friendly solution. It allows fully-integrated information, so when a customer logs on to make a payment, they can see their full payment history. We are also included in this proposal is adding a module with Tyler Technologies for e-missaneous billing, which would provide additional opportunities for electronic payments for other customers that do transactions with the city, such as business licensing, retirees who need to pay a portion of their health insurance to the city, they would have the opportunity to make those payments electronically. This also adds a feature that we don't currently provide, which would allow for customers to use an e-check payment rather than just a credit card payment. We looked at the pricing compared to our current pricing with BridgePay. Tyler Payments would be a slight increase over those current fees. However, we feel that it would be very much within the range of what we are currently paying. We are proposing continuing to have those credit card and e-check fees that are related to water payments absorbed into the system, so those customers would not pay an additional fee for the ability to make those electronic payments. However, with the miscellaneous billing module, similar to the way that credit cards work for tax payments, there would be a convenience fee added on if they choose to use electronic payments for those.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
It's fine, it doesn't matter.
Let me go to the vice president, and I'm going to go to Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you. This one sounds a little easier than your last item, but would there also be point-of-sale usage as well? Like, if someone wanted to go and get a dog's license and came into City Hall, would they be, would this be part of that?
So, the city operates on a number of different systems currently. Point-of-payment for the treasurer's office and the clerk's office are through, they use BSNA software, and so that is a different credit card provider that plays nice in the sandbox with BSNA.
Gotcha. I was just wondering if we were looking to consolidate basically all of it together?
I would love to. That's on the longer-term.
Gotcha.
Goal list.
Okay, yeah, maybe if we had a budget and fiscal manager, they could look in. No.
For the record, we did, we did have conversations with the credit card provider that we do utilize through BSNA.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we would not be able to give the same level of customer service without incurring additional integration fees that would add on another twenty-five to thirty-thousand dollars to this proposal.
Okay.
So, we're not making the recommendation for that reason. It's not worth it at this time to consolidate.
And that was actually going to be my follow-up, why not go with what we already have? Okay, and I know you said there was going to be a slight increase. Okay. And I know you said there was going to be a slight increase. I guess I wouldn't be doing my due diligence if I didn't follow up with, what's the definition of slight?
So.
Roughly. I mean, it doesn't have to.
It will be about $4,000, um, on $172,000 a year.
Okay. All right. Um, thank you. That's all the questions I had. I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent for this.
Councilman Toy, do you still have anything?
I do, um, if I may.
Yep.
Deb, I wondered, um, I'm trying to go back in my memory, which is kind of scary, to remember that at some point, when I was treasurer, we started taking American Express and we did get, um, money back when people used their American Express, much like businesses do. We don't, well, we get charged fees more than we get money back off of them, but now anyhow. Do we do anything like that in the city so that if somebody comes in to pay their tax bill with an American Express or a Visa or whatever, do we benefit by any of that?
American Express is actually the most expensive card for us to accept.
Okay.
And it's, it's really mind-boggling when you look at, uh, credit card fees if we were not capped at a, at a per-transaction amount. If someone were to come in and pay with a bare-bones Visa card that had no benefits attached to it compared to a reward credit card that, you know, has miles and all of those things, that could cost, uh, on a strict exchange basis, three or four times as much as a basic Visa. So, having a credit card arrangement where it is set based on the transaction amount and not based on the type of card, um, it actually, depending on the makeup of a community and, um, the, the types of cards that are presented, it can be considerably more expensive. So, no, on this type of transaction, there is not currently the opportunity to get money back.
Get money back on that or, yeah, airline points. No, I'm teasing. But, so we will, under this plan, pretty much accept any kind of credit card then, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't matter what they use?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem. Anything else from council? We do have an approving on consent. Um, anything from the audience? Seeing none? That matter is all but assured to be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for hanging out with us today. All right. Um, I'm gonna go to the audi, oh, no, I already went to the audience.
Coffee?
Listen, I'm having that. I need a coffee. Yeah, I've run out of Red Bull. Uh, number 14 is a request to, I need a request to accept a grant from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. This comes to us from the Planning and Economic Development Department. It's a proposal for McKenna to update the Livonia Vision 21 Master Plan utilizing MISTHA Housing Readiness Incentive Grants. Who's got this one?
I do. Thank you. Uh, this, uh, request seeks council acceptance of a $50,000, uh, grant from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority and award of a contract to McKenna to conduct a, uh, a housing readiness, uh, well, basically a housing update to the Livonia Vision 21 Master Plan. Earlier this summer, at our request, uh, McKenna applied for and received the grant, uh, from MISTHA. It's, uh, referred to as a Housing Readiness Incentive Grant. The purpose basically is to evaluate and update the, the city's policies and procedures relative to middle housing. The grant will fund strategic planning efforts that will potentially lead to changes in the master plan and other zoning regulations. Uh, we intend to establish a steering committee with stakeholders from the Planning Commission, the City Council, and the Housing Commission. The grant, uh, has no local match requirement, uh, so the study will be 100% funded by MISTHA. It's expected to last about a year. Team leaders from McKenna include Donovan Smith, who is available tonight to answer any questions, and Paul Lippens, who, as you know, was involved in, uh, writing the Bike Walk Livonia, uh, Livonia Vision Master Plan as well as the zoning ordinance. So, that'll answer any questions.
So, that's Mr. Donovan Smith.
Donovan's here, yes.
I just want to, before I hand it over to Councilman Donovan, I just want to thank you.
Yes.
For being here this late and watching this. And we, and we always like grants, so I, I just wanted to, to say thanks for hanging in there. Here's Councilman Donovan.
Mr. President, before I ask my questions, Mr. Formina, would it be appropriate if, if you get to say a few words about what he's doing?
Sure, absolutely. Yes. Uh, thank you, uh, council, and good evening and thanks for allowing me to be here this evening. Uh, my name is Donovan Smith. I'm the principal with McKenna and Associates. Um, and as Mark indicated, uh, earlier this year, uh, the state MISTHA Housing Development Authority, they released the Housing Readiness Incentive Grant, uh, across the state. About $2 million they allocated to communities, uh, to support, uh, master plan updates, uh, master plans and zoning ordinance changes that support housing affordability, um, the stock of housing and quality of housing and identifying strategies on how communities can kind of address those challenges related to housing. So, the, the City of Livonia was awarded $50,000. McKenna has proposed to update the master plan, uh, with these housing strategies and, and new demographics and things of that nature for $45,000. The remaining $5,000 will be awarded to the city directly. Um, and then we worked out a plan to hold several community engagement activities, uh, with the Planning Commission, with the residents themselves, um, including a couple surveys, um, again, diving into, uh, the issues that currently, uh, Livonia faces as it relates to housing and affordability, um, but also, again, understanding those, uh, challenges and how we can address them in a way that, uh, meshes well with the vision, uh, that the community has. So, again, thank you for having me this evening and again, if you have any questions, feel free to ask them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Smith. A few comments. Uh, I'm happy to see as we saw some grants applied for this evening from another department. Great job to the Planning Department and McKenna for finding some available money. You know, the money's out there at state and federal, local level, et cetera, and, and they're gonna give it to someone. I'm happy to see that money's coming to Livonia. I, I know we've, tonight we had a few different residential, uh, items brought before us. Housing's changing. Housing's getting more expensive and I think if we can continue to update and, and move on with, with, um, with the market realities of, of where the, where housing is going. Now, with that said, I'd like to preface, I don't want to change, I don't want to change standards and materials. We, as Livonia, demand the best quality of materials and I hope that this, this, uh, steering committee, as Mr. Formina mentioned, we continue that. We don't want, you know, uh, lesser materials just to make things affordable. So, I hope that we consider that and continue to press upon that. And then also, I know we talk about affordability and while affordability's important, I also want to be unapologetic that Livonia is an expensive community to live in to purchase real estate because we are the best and we have the best department staff, we have the best police department, we have the best fire department, the list goes on. And we are very, um, good location and, and with that comes market realities and we're gonna be the most expensive at times. I'm happy about that. And if our housing values continue to increase, it's a good thing. That means we're succeeding as a community and I hope our housing values only continue to go up and up and it, and it's gonna be more expensive to purchase homes in our city and that's a good thing. With that being said, we want to provide as much housing as we can to our residents and as we talk about some of these dilapidated buildings and, and, uh, rather large office buildings, we're gonna have to figure out how to repurpose those. And I'm hoping that Mr. Formina's leadership can, can do that and, and with the steering committee, maybe someone from the private sector is a part of that to kind of explain to government, you know, the realities that our developers are dealing with in the community and, and I'm happy to see we're doing this. So, I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you. Uh, so we have an approving on consent. Council, do we have anything further? Councilman Bezansky.
I know it's been a long night, um, but I, I do think that this is an exciting project. I know it's a pretty aggressive timetable, um, but it includes, and, and an impressive scope of work too, a community engagement. And I feel like, you know, we've had a few projects where we've had community engagement, you know, uh, surveys and things like that. And then you always find residents who say, hey, I never knew about this or when did this happen? So, I was just wondering, what are some of your, um, strategies for reaching, you know, um, people on the ground?
Yeah. So, uh, among our strategies, yes, we do, uh, do surveys and outreach in that fashion, but we do lean on a lot of the Planning Commission, um, City Council and other departments to, to share with us those methods that the city has had success with in terms of outreach and communication. And then if there are other ways that we can be, uh, innovative and find out different ways to do outreach, we're always able to do that. So, we're a very open book in terms of, uh, different types of community engagement. Uh, we also are seeking to form a collaboration with the city, um, to identify the best way to communicate with the residents.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Um, so we have an approving on consent. Anything else from the audience? Seeing none? Thank you so much for hanging on with us, presenting this information and it's always nice to have a grant.
Thank you.
Have a great night. All right, moving on to item number 15 is a request to, for authorization to purchase one Orion Zoom camera and tractor through the Sourcewell contract. Comes to us from the Department of Public Works. Uh, for use for the sewer department. Good evening.
Good evening, Councilor Ryan Farrell, DPW.
You're up.
Yep, so we've had a lot of grant opportunities coming tonight among us. I want to point out this is from the Ford donation that Dave Lehrer worked very hard on, uh, getting for the city. The Department of Public Works would like to purchase one Orion Zoom pan and telecamera with a tractor. This equipment will be used to inspect roughly 800 miles of our sewer main. This equipment is used to drive down the sewer main to televise the sewer main and the connections while an operator observes and codes the pipe's condition to the NASCO standard pipeline assessment. Department is requesting approval from the council for one Orion Zoom pan and telecamera with a tractor from Jekyll &amp; Company's through the Sourcewell contract in the amount not to exceed $38,530. Be happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Thank you, council. Councilman Morgan.
Yep, so this is a, a grant. It's fully funded, so we don't, we're not putting out any money?
Not, no money at all. Technically, it's a donation, not a grant, but no money from the city will be spent for this.
Awesome. Just what I like to hear. Okay. I'll offer an approving on consent. Thank you.
All right, we got an approving on consent. Anything else from council? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? All right. You knocked one out. Let's keep it going. Number 16 is a request to purchase two QuickView Air HD cameras with telescopic poles and tablets from a sole source provider. Comes with from Public Works. Floor's yours.
So, this will also be purchased with the Ford donation money as well. These are cameras on telescopic poles used for quick assessment of underground pipe. They are used to inspect pipe sizes anywhere from six inches to 48 inches with a viewing distance up to 400 feet that telescope down a manhole or a structure to 30 feet. The department will use them to quickly assess our sanitary sewers, siphons, catch basins, storm sewers, culverts, wet wells, viadocks, and manholes. The department is requesting council to approve the purchase of these two QuickView Air HD cameras with the telescopic, telescopic poles and tablets through an ideal contract from Bell Equipment, not to exceed $40,384.
Awesome. Councilman Morgan?
So moved.
All right, we gotta move. So moved. Consent? It's free money again. It's donation.
Yeah, it's a donation.
All right. Anything from the audience or further from council? Seeing none? You did well. Have a good night.
Yep, one more for you.
All right, you got one more. All right, we got, uh, number, item number 17 is a more bid from the Department of Public Works for manual transfer switch and installation at the Newburg, Newburg Pump Station from budgeted funds.
So, the Department of Public Works secured a portable generator for use at the Newburg Viaduct Stormwater Pump Station. We received this, this generator this August and it ran through its proper startups. To power the viaduct with, with the generator during power outages, we need to have a manual transfer switch installed. As per procedure, we have secured three quotes from qualified vendors. The department is requesting council approval to the lowest, the, the department is requesting council approval to the lowest qualified bidder, Roto Electric, in the amount not to exceed $27,269.
Thank you.
From budgeted funds. There's not a grant for this one.
That's okay.
Oh, geez.
Councilman Morgan.
All right, I'll, I'm, I'm gonna offer an approving on consent also. This is, uh, that's not bad. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Anything from the audience?
Councilman Morgan.
All right, um, we got number 18 is a request to authorize appropriation and expenditure. Comes to us from the Department of Public Works, Water Sewer Division, for emergency sewer repair on Farmington Road from the unexpended, uh, fund balance.
It's true.
Mr. Rohrav, hi.
Good evening. Don Rohrav, DPW. I'm the last one in the audience, so I get this item. As you mentioned, um, while performing some work in June, consumers, um, accidentally bored through one of our 30-inch water mains along Farmington Road. This affected our city services, causing an emergency shutdown to that main. Due to the size of the job and the specialized resources and equipment necessary, uh, to make that emergency repair, we brought in our emergency contractor, um, to take care of that project for us. The city will be seeking reimbursement for the consumer, from consumers for the cost of the repairs and everything that we're doing here, but we would like to get our contractor paid, uh, while we're negotiating and arguing back and forth for, uh, all of that stuff. So, that's why we're here tonight. Um, the department would, is requesting approval of funds from the unexpended fund balance of the Water and Sewer Fund in the amount of $175,867.84 to pay our contractor for the work that they had performed.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
I got, uh, Vice President, then I'll go to Mr. Donovan.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick, where are we at on the reimbursement from consumers? Are we, uh, what's it looking like?
No, I, it's just they, they go through every, and, and that's both ways, right? When they put a claim on us, we, we do the same thing. So, they're going through that, um, that submittal.
All the red tape, basically.
Yeah, and there, there's always questions back and forth of what, you know, what's this and you just justify that. But, um, we're in, we're in the process of doing that. I just, it's been a couple months and I don't think it's right to hold, you know, our contractors out there for that, so.
I don't disagree. I mean, this is something we had to take care of.
Absolutely.
It was an emergency and we need to get them paid. Um, I'll be happy to offer an approving on the, on consent.
Thanks, Mr. President. A comment, going through the packet, this was picture perfect. This gives us the cover as council members, the transparency that we need. Great breakdown of all the costs. I mean, it stinks to spend that kind of money regardless of the reimbursement or not. Uh, this is picture perfect. It's such a great detailed breakdown, um, because it's a lot of money that we have to spend. And while we're gonna go after consumers, there's a lot of these smart attorneys out here that complicate things, so who knows when we'll get paid from consumers. But, uh, with that being said on the record, for these sorts of things, we went out, marked our water, we were, we're covered on our side.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've done everything, so everything will be, being reviewed. If, if there's questions coming back, we'll, we'll make sure that we work through that process and, and get everything taken care of.
Great. Thank you, sir. Thanks, Mr. President.
No.
No problem. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? Um, I'm gonna go back to council, Lord, uh, Councilman Toy, take us home.
Motion to adjourn.
Good night, Livonia.
Good night.
Good morning, Livonia.